of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both remote and in person, and I'll give you a few points on that in just a moment. Please also note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're connected remotely. I don't see anyone else recording, so that's fine. So pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it's in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and the conference ID number is 893-265-788. Or you may also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is in the agenda posted on the town website. Well, this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Chatham 18. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and as mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So let's start with a roll call vote of the board members. Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chang.
Warren Chang, present.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, present.
Charlene Greenhout.
Charlene Greenhout, present.
Frank Shearer.
Frank Shearer, present.
And Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
And I'm Catherine Halpern. I'm also present, and I'll ask the board members, is there anyone who needs to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda? Okay. All right, so why don't we go ahead. Minutes from March 25 meetings, are there any corrections, additions? There being none, could I have a motion to approve the draft as submitted?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the March 25, 2024 meeting minutes.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you so much. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chang.
Warren Chang, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Charlene Greenhout.
Charlene Greenhout, approve.
Frank Shearer.
Frank Shearer, approve.
And Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. So next on our agenda is a site plan review for a change of use for an amended site plan. This is for 82 and 102 Meeting House Road, the Chatham Dog Club, change of use. And Mr. Riley, can you present for us? Thank you so much.
Yeah, good afternoon. Bill Riley on behalf of Chatham Dog Club, Ann Corrigan, who's the Honorable President with us today. The change of use is that up until now, the Chatham Dog Club has not provided any overnight stays for the dogs, and there's apparently quite a bit of demand for the ability for some people to occasionally leave their dog overnight. And the, so they, I think the goal is that they want to be able to have six dogs, six dogs stay overnight.
Six dogs at the house, 20 dogs at the facility.
20 dogs, all right. Twenty dogs in the main facility.
Mr. Riley, could you repeat that into the mic, please?
Yeah, well, so it's, yeah, 20 dogs in the main facility could stay overnight, and six dogs in the house where they have special care if the dog's got a special problem. The, so there's no change in the, in the buildings themselves. Well, they do want to put a run on the south side, fence the inner run so the dogs can go outside. The, right now, began during COVID, but they're continuing it because it works out so well. Basically, they have a camera system. When an employee sees a client pulling in with a dog, they go outside, take the dog out of the car, and the car leaves. So there's no park, real parking issues there. They just come in, drop the dog off, and leave right away. So we think that, and so none of that's going to change. It's just there will be some, some animals will, will stay overnight, and they have one person who's, who lives in the house where they do the special care of the dog. So there'll be somebody on the property 24 hours a day. That's basically our presentation. We do have a note from Judy Giorgio, and so I've spoken to Judy. She says 50 gallons per day per kennel. I said, so what's a kennel? I said, as far as we're concerned, we only have one kennel. And she said, well, she didn't know. She had to talk to DEP to find out what a kennel was. But in speaking with Ms. Corrigan, excuse me. I hate it when that happens. So, you know, we think that this is a process where there's no requirement for additional parking. There's really, since there won't be any more dogs on the property than are on the property at this time, we don't think that there's going to be any requirement for Board of Health. That's really a Board of Health issue anyway, and we'll be dealing with the Board of Health about that. So the, I'm not certain, you know, what kind of conditions you might be interested in imposing where there's really, aside from the fact that some dogs are going to spend the night, there's really going to be no change in the operation. But happy to take questions and...
Let me just review some of the points from the staff report, and then we'll go to questions. Regarding the requirements of the Board of Health, it is up to the Board of Health to determine.
Right.
If you need additional flow. Technically, it's not under the purview of the Planning Board. It is a Board of Health issue, and we may not need to condition, you will need to comply with whatever the Board of Health requires. I do want to point out, and you have in your pack, it's a note from Jay Briggs, the Building Commissioner, about the parking. And Jay says, due to the number of parking spaces, 521 CMR requires at least one van-accessible space and access aisle. Surfaces shall have a uniform paved or hard-packed smooth surface. Parking spaces and access aisles shall be level with the surface slopes, not exceeding 1 to 50%, 2% in all directions. So I think Building Commissioner is asking for a proper van-accessible parking space. The Board could choose to add that to the conditions. So, and then let's just go through some of the other referral responses. Zoning Board of Appeals, the applicant will be scheduled to be heard on May 9. We have nothing from DPW, Police, or Fire, or Health Department. Says the number of proposed kennels does not seem feasible for private septic. So they need to determine what needs to be done. HBDC, no approvals required. Airport, no, it's out of airport jurisdiction, out of Conservation Commission jurisdiction. And I just read you the response from Building Commissioner. So let's go to questions from the board. Art Spru.
Just, just a couple of things. I noted, excuse me, I noted when I was out there that you have a couple of catch basins on site, so they do capture all the storm water. They seem to be functioning very well. I think the confusing thing about the Board of Health issue, which we may need to do some sort of a comment on, is if there is a requirement that has, that the flow has to be upgraded, your solution would be to connect to the sewer. Then I'm asking a question.
I don't, I don't think the sewer's there yet.
Yeah. So does that, does that limit your ability to actually proceed with this if that is something that the Board of Health puts a burden on you?
I don't think so. I think the, typically, when the sewer is in the offing, so to speak, they usually give you a period of time to hook up, and I think that's, we'd ask for that if, if they do in fact end up imposing additional flow. We don't, see, there's going to be no interior changes to the, to the building. We're going to put a run on the outside, but other than that, there's no interior changes to the building. So Judy's thing as well, it's 50 gallons per day per kennel. But we don't, we don't have any kennels. We have an open space where the dogs socialize and...
Well, the only, the only reason I'm bringing this up is if that is a requirement and you do need to connect to the sewer, I, I just want an as-built of that be on file with our, with our board after, if that's a requirement of the Board of Health. That's all on that.
I have a question. Katie, maybe you can help. I mean, if we're approving a change of use and the Board of Health requires connection to the sewer to supply the, the flow that's needed for that change of use, I would say that you cannot open till you are connected to the sewer. Is that correct? Or how does that work?
Well, they can't until the Board of Health approves it.
Yes.
In whatever form they approve it in.
Yes. Okay, great. Okay.
All right. The, the only other things is the run on the, on the rear, there's no dimensions on it. There's, there's no description of type of fence, the height of it. There are some grade-related issues in the back. I'm assuming you may have to grade that area off. I don't know if you're going to cut down any of those trees, so there's no information associated with it. So it'd be helpful if there was a little bit more detail that you could provide to us associated with it. I don't, I don't see any reason why that can't be just supplemental information that you provide, but...
Right.
Do you want to add that as a condition, or is it...
We can add that as a condition, and, but I don't, I don't have any other questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay. Warren?
I have many of those same questions, but just one additional clarification. One of the back, background documents, it doesn't really say which, which applicant submitted it. But anyway, it describes the, the run that's going to be put, put on as an enclosed exterior run.
Right. The south end of the building. It's on the site plan.
No, but it's, is it enclosed? To me, would mean it's inside, but it's not inside, right?
It's enclosed in a fence.
Yeah, it's going to have a fence around it. All right.
That's right.
Just for clarification. And also, again, I was going to ask, you know, for dimensions on it, if theoretically could have 20 dogs in it, and it certainly doesn't look very big from the draft, but it's just handwritten on there. So it would seem to me to have an adequate size for it. I don't think there's any limitation on how big that run could be. But certainly, I think we ought to have something that indicates exactly what it is that's going to be there. But that's all. No other questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Bob Wurchafter.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure out the outdoor run and the, the cleanup from that. Is there, is there any requirement that, I mean, because you just said it's all going down into a catch basin. That catch basin is then going into our water supply. Is there no requirement that we have, or any restrictions on, on how that?
That'd be interesting. I would, I would expect that this have to go to the sanitary sewer. But again, that would be a Board of Health and a Building Department related issue.
But that would be, I, I'm assuming that's, that they're looking at the inside usage, and I'm, I'm more concerned about all those dogs running around outside with your nice water treatment.
Yeah.
And lack of water treatment.
Right.
Going into the, to the groundwater. So I, I'm surprised that we don't have that in our...
Yep. Good point.
In our purview, you're surprised. Can you...
That's not a, I mean, it is, it's not directly a health issue. It's a, it's an environmental issue.
Cleanliness. Yeah.
It is part of the site plan.
It, it's actually a site because it's not, it's not considered part of the building.
Right. And I, and I, and I, I'm thinking 20 dogs in that area, and we don't have any control over how that works?
Perhaps we can throw a little enlightenment on it.
Lucidate. Lucidate, yes.
So the dogs will be allowed in there kind of one at a time for a little exercise.
Yeah.
And the, any, any poop will be, is cleaned up by the employees.
Okay.
So it doesn't get washed until the...
It's not going into the water supply.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right. Charlene?
Once you collect the poop, where does it go? I mean, how do you dispose of it?
Goes into the toilet.
No, it doesn't.
God, I hope not.
See, I don't know anything about it. Come up and explain that. That's where I'd put mine, but I don't know.
Thank you.
This is Ann Corrigan.
So currently, we have two play yards to both sides of the building. One is 100 feet by 40 feet, and another is about 70 feet by 40 feet. So there, there are already spaces where the dogs are playing. So this enclosure that you're worried about is just a small, a pen to do timeouts, or if a dog's not appropriate with group, then we would put it by itself in this particular area. It's not covered. It's literally a chain-link exercise yard, period. Currently, and for the last nine years I've been at that facility, what we do, we, we scoop, we bag, and we put it in a chest freezer. It goes in the chest freezer, and it goes to landfill, to the transfer station once a week. There's no smell. There's, there's no, there's, it gets picked up immediately. It gets frozen, and then it gets transported off the property. Outside of that, I have AstroTurf on both the front and the backyard play yards, and those get disinfected with a biodegradable disinfectant that gets hosed down every day just to keep it clean and keep the odor down. And this has been, I'm not new with this. There's an industry that does this, and there's protocols that we all follow. So the increase of load on the septic system will, will be zero. There will be no increase on that. That's it.
There you go. It's great to have knowledge here, isn't it?
I mean, I know you've been there for a long, long time, and honestly, I don't ever remember hearing any complaints about anything to do with your business.
No.
Wonderful. I appreciate that.
I, I, you know, if we are leaning towards approval on this, I, I would want to include, you know, the Board of Health requirement that that be addressed prior to the operation of the change of use.
Okay.
As a condition number four.
Do you really think that's appropriate? It's just a Board of Health issue.
I, I think it's check and balance. We've, in, in my world of planning, we always, we, excuse me, Mr. Riley, I'm speaking.
How are you balancing, how are you balancing the Board of Health?
Mr. Riley, I'm speaking. I would hate for anyone to think that they could start the business under our purview without first. And it is not unusual in any community that I've ever worked with that you include requirements from other boards, committees, or departments just to be sure that the applicant understands what they need to do. So, you know, and so that being said, I would also want to include the requirement that the van parking space be added.
From Building Commissioner.
And that along with, I think we would see, need to see a revised plan. I, I would not want to necessarily require a revised plan for approval, but that we have some kind of an as-built plan showing where that's going to be located and, and how that's going to be addressed.
The parking space.
The parking space, that one van-accessible parking space.
As well as the dimensions of the fence.
Right. Exactly.
For the enclosure, just so it's precise. Yeah. Okay, that's fine. So we're adding three conditions. Charlene is requesting that we're adding three.
Well, actually, it's the Board of Health, it's the van-accessible space.
And then the as-built.
And then the shown on the as-built.
We show the dimensions.
Right. And I know Mr. Riley might take issue with me, but generally, if zoning Board of Appeals approval is necessarily necessary that that be included, that until such time as ZBA approval. But I, that one I'll leave to the board.
Yeah, we usually haven't cited that. Do you have any objections, Katie, or, yeah?
No objections. We, we won't issue the permits unless everybody signs off, but I have no objections to it being included.
I mean, it's not like this is going to need a building permit, though, and that's, usually that's where you catch things.
Right.
This won't need, I don't think, a change of use permit's going to be required with the Building Department?
It, it actually may. I would think, yes, we actually require building permits for change of use.
Then that would be a good catch for that.
So, and because it's being, going from just dog daycare to boarding.
Okay.
I think that we would ask for a building permit to be...
Okay.
Okay. But at any rate, you've requested, let's review the conditions you're requesting for Annie's benefit.
Yep, for the benefit of the board.
What I came up with is Board of Health requirements shall be addressed prior to the operation of the change of use. And five, one van-accessible parking space and access aisle on a paved or hard-packed surface shall be provided and shall be shown on an as-built plan. Okay, great.
All right. Can I have a question?
Yes.
So I think that, I think the parking requirement is absolutely appropriate. I think the Board of Health issue is not appropriate unless you explain how the applicant is supposed to notify the Board, the Planning Board that the, we have approval at the Board of Health. Is that an additional requirement on them? They have to get an approval and bring it here?
You don't need to notify us in that case. It's just, it's one of the conditions, and it all goes through Community Development Department. Yeah.
Sure, it could be requested that the health agent notify Community Development that they're all set with the...
Yeah.
So I can't hear.
Could request that. But the, the health agent can notify Community Development. We do it through the building permit process anyway, actually through our permitting software. They actually have to sign off on any permits that they're, that they're, that they're good with it anyway, so.
So it seems to me that...
It would not have to come back here as it...
Yeah, it doesn't.
As, as soon as the, the health director determines all is okay, they'll sign off so that the building permit for the change of use can be issued.
It seems to me that having that language in your permit then is redundant, and it can only lead to questions later that we don't have an answer to.
It doesn't lead to questions. It's, it's, could be repetitive, and, but I think if the board would like to include it, we, we do cite, sometimes in our conditions, we do cite comments from referral responses. we do cite comments from referral responses just to be sure that it, that, what Charlene said, that the applicant knows what needs to be done. I'll say it's not necessary that we include it, but if the board would like to include it, I don't see that it's harmful, it doesn't burden you in any way. You have to do it anyway. You know, the Board of Health will require whatever they require.
I understand that, but in the world that lawyers inhabit, which is not a nice place to live, by the way, they, you know, if that, if we're supposed to record, you know, your approval, then somebody in the future is gonna say, well, prove that you got the Board of Health approval. And that's why I'm saying I don't think it's really fair to the applicant. So five years or 10 years down the road, somebody says, well, prove that you got Board of Health approval.
It'll be, it'll be in the file. I mean, maybe Katie couldn't respond.
Well, again, it wouldn't necessarily be in the file, but it would be online, the online permitting. We could do it another way if the board's amenable. We do a cover letter to the applicant with the approval, and we could state that.
Oh, yes, we've done that.
That the Board of Health approves it in the approval letter as opposed to making it a condition of the statement of conditions. It's another option the board can consider.
I, I don't care for that option myself, but whatever the board.
Just to support you, my experience is exactly what you have described here, Charlene. And the planning board is sort of the umbrella of all these others. Because none of the others give you a sign off on this. We're the only ones since, since this is site, site plan. That means everything has to be done, and we are the umbrella for it. So referencing sewer or referencing ZBA, I'm, my experience is that's always been in the approvals that I've, I've been involved with in the decades that I've been on a planning board.
Yes. Okay, so let's.
And mine in my 30-something years of being a planner, professional planner.
Okay. So let's continue, and then we'll just see how the board wants to vote on adding those conditions. I'm, I'm fine with it. At the very worst, it's repetitive, at the very worst. At best, it just, you know, gives a clear indication that Planning Board's approval is also contingent on getting all these other approvals that you need. So that's all. Frank, you have some comments or questions?
Just to say that I support Charlene. I think all of those comments are, are well taken, and I don't have anywhere near the breadth or length of experience on this panel, but I do have some experience, and it's mine as well, that putting conditions as discussed is quite common and is, is really best practice.
Okay.
But no other comments.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Dupus?
First of all, Bill, I, I wish you wouldn't have given us a plan that's been around since the 17th, 1017.
2017.
We should have had a new plan because the engineer on here, I'm sure, does not know that you used his plan and wrote on it. There's a big thing going around here, people doing that. Anyway, that's besides the point. Next time, make it a little bigger. But I would have liked to have seen the, where the dogs are gonna sleep inside the 20 dogs. Now, the 20 dogs have been there forever, right? Okay. And they, they play on either, either pen, and you've done a very good job at it. And I have no problem with the doggy 10, 10-minute out. And I know a lot of dogs that would need about two or three hours. And I know some humans that might need a few in there, too. And, and the thing with the, the septic system now, how many people are employed there at one time?
Four.
Four, okay. How many people are gonna be there at night?
One.
And is there one there now?
The house is vacant, waiting on this decision.
Okay, so you're gonna have one person living there?
That's right.
Now, do they cook there for themselves?
Not at the facility, at 102, which is a house there that is currently vacant. That I've been leasing from Mr. Stello for nine years now. My son was living it, now it's vacant.
That's all right. I don't, I don't, so you have a place outside the kennel?
Yes, on the same.
Just for no other reason, and that's about all I can remember. So, so there'd be one person on duty at all times inside the, inside the kennel? Or, or in the other building?
On the property.
On the property. Now, how, is there a connection with video cameras and all that stuff?
Everything's in, in the facility currently is under, has camera, so you can see.
There's no problem with the septic system, the way you're running it? And you don't, won't have to change it until the sewer goes, will be involved when it comes by you and they say, hook up. That's when you're gonna automatically hook up, no matter what. So that's a moot point, the sewer thing.
Right.
And as long as you maintain that septic tank, which, when's the last time it was pumped?
I'd have to get those records for you, I don't know.
I think you should look up the records, because in that business with four people and five people in there, sometimes you should, might want to have it pumped every two to three years so that it maintains itself.
Knowing Mr. Stello, I don't think it would be overlooked.
I'm just, I'm doing that as, as a courtesy to you guys, so you don't have trouble and have to put a septic system in before the sewer's ready, all right? But I think it's a great plan, and we, it's something we need in this town for people to go away for, on, on weekends or something to be able to do that. And to have a separate facility for the non-conforming dogs. I, I don't see any problems with that either. So I'm, I'm highly in favor of this project.
All right, good. Thank you. Great. Any other questions? I think we just need to see, does the board as a whole agree that we wanna add these conditions that were outlined by Charlene and Art and Frank? One, certainly to add the handicap parking and, and aisle. Two, that.
Wait a minute, that was not considered a handicap parking, was it? It was a parking for.
Van accessible.
Van accessible. Disability accessible.
Okay, all right, my mistake.
Yeah. With the specifications given by Mr. Briggs. And then contingent upon Board of Health approval for the change of use and contingent upon ZBA approval. And also that we want an as-built plan that includes the dimensions of the exterior run.
Right.
And the location of the parking.
Yes, and the location of the parking space, the van accessible parking space. Okay, so is that, so does the board as a whole feel comfortable adding those conditions to the three standard conditions that are in the staff report that we usually have? So if that is the case, could I have a motion to approve the amended site plan with the conditions for the change of use with the conditions as just outlined?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amended site plan with the conditions as we have outlined here for the propose, for the proposal to expand and change of use from personal and household service use perenned dog care and training facility with retail component and perenned to include a kennel operation including overnight boarding based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the protective zoning bylaws with the conditions as outlined.
Wait a minute, it's not a kennel.
It's not a kennel?
It's not a kennel.
It's a facility that provides overnight accommodations.
Which I think is categorized as a kennel.
Yeah.
By the zoning bylaw. It's categorized as a kennel. That's its name, yes, we have to call it that. Okay, great. Great. So we have a motion on the floor, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you so much. Art Sprou.
Art Sprou, approve.
And Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer, approve.
And Bob Dupus.
Bob Dupus, approve.
And Mrs. Catherine Helfer, and I also approve. Thank you so much, and great success.
Thank you.
On your expansion. All right. Next item on the agenda is an approval not required. Is there anyone, yes, Thad, can you present on this? This is for 320 and 342 Barn Hill Road.
Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Aldrich, G Southeast. I have a review and endorsement and approval not required plan. My clients own two properties on Barn Hill Road. One has 16,000 square feet of area, the other has 48,000 square feet of area. We're doing an uneven land swap where there's a .4 square foot parcel and a 4,800 square foot parcel. The end result will be a 20,666 square foot lot and a 43,795 square foot lot. Both have more than 100 feet of frontage, and the purpose of that little parcel is to be able to reuse that bound that already exists. It just hinges the line on that.
Great. Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments for Thad? All right. So may I have a motion to endorse the A and R plan entitled Division Plan 328 and 342 Barn Hill Road dated April 9th, 2024?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Art Sprou.
Art Sprou, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer, approve.
Bob Dupus.
Bob Dupus, approve.
And Mrs. Catherine Helfer, and I also approve.
Thank you much.
Thank you, Thad.
Welcome back, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, just one thing, speaking of an approval, you're good, Thad. An approval not required plan, my signature and, oh my God, Frank's signature are not recorded at the registry deeds or the claim court.
We will get a document to get those, so for the time being, I would suggest then just the other five members sign.
I can, I can vote to endorse it, I just can't endorse it.
Right. Okay. So, yes, so we can sign it tonight? Yes, great. The Mylar's back with Annie. Great, thank you. All right. So next, we'll move on to long-range planning. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. So with us tonight, who will be moving ahead with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And with us tonight, we have, of course, Katie Donovan, our Community Development Department Chair, and Gloria McPherson, who's our Housing and Sustainability Director. And also connected remotely is Pat Costello, our Town Council, who are here to help us with any questions on the new wording. Now, tonight, I think we just wanna consider the new wording that has been added to the draft of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center in red. And, and we have those who've worked quite a bit on it to help us with any questions or comments. I just wanted to remind the board and remind the public why we're only gonna look at the items in red on the current draft. And that's just to remind you of our, of our 10-year-long process with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. There's been many layers that we've considered in this process. We started with the comprehensive plan and the Route 28 visioning study that was done by Cape Cod Commission in 2014. And there was significant public outreach at that time, and some of the basics of this zoning bylaw. Through that time, there was significant public outreach and integration of that knowledge into the bylaw. Then there was another layer added, I think it was in 2017, we worked with Cape Cod Commission who worked on the design standards for the bylaw. And then after that, there was a lot of review by the board, again, taking public input. And then after that, we embarked on adding the layer of form-based code. Again, at each point, taking public input and incorporating that. And each point in the draft bylaw has been considered by the board with the advice of experts such as Cape Cod Commission at each point. And the integration of community response at each point. And then by formal vote of the board, we decided on each issue. So I think we're not gonna review those at this time. We're just gonna look at the new wording. If we are, if we can agree to the new wording tonight, the, as the build-out analysis is in process with Cape Cod Commission, we're also planning to get visuals. The next step would be to take the final draft, the so-called final draft, with the build-out analysis and the visuals to bring it to the public and to gather more. It will have a couple of purposes, to gather public response, but also we have to do a lot of information giving and a lot of education. Come January or so, 2025, we'll look at a summary of new input we've received from the public. And at that point, if we need to reconsider any point in the draft bylaw, we can, before we send it to the Select Board, who would send it back to us to hold the public hearing, to include it on the warrant for Annual Town Meeting 2025. So I just wanted to review that process, so we're clear where we are. I also, there will be a chance for public comment if anyone is connected from the public. Again, in consideration of time, if we can live in our comments to five minutes, and also just to consider the new language in red. Also, I just wanted to very briefly address some comments that came up from the board in our last meeting. Please remember that the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, the whole concept of it is really based in the comprehensive plan. And that's to create a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly neighborhood center that also provides a variety of housing options for all income levels. The board has chosen during the course of this process to emphasize, to give some emphasis to that housing option, to provide a variety of housing options for all income levels, because that, that is one aspect of our response to the housing crisis in Chatham and on the Cape. But remember that, first of all, the West Chatham Neighborhood Center is not a housing project per se. It is not only that. That's one element in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And also zoning to include a range of housing options for all income level is one tool in our toolkit to address the housing crisis in Chatham. There are other tools that are also being implemented in town. And also, the board with Gloria and Katie, we're planning to look at other housing initiatives we can do through zoning that will also address the housing crisis. So I just wanted to remind you that it's never been the intention of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning district to be purely a housing project to address affordable and attainable housing. Mixed-use housing for all income levels, that's been more the direction we've taken. So with that, why don't we go, I'm gonna suggest that we just go through page by page, and I'll ask the board if there are questions for Katie or Gloria or for Attorney Costello on any of the wording or any suggested amendments. So let's look at the first page. We've got point H under purpose, and we have some stricken language under applicability. Are there any questions or comments here? No? Okay, great. Then let's move to page three. Under five, under definitions, we have a definition for attainable housing. And then we have, for primary building, we have that language changed to frontage building. Any questions, comments, changes? All right.
Madam Chair, I just have a.
Yes.
Question back on paragraph four.
Paragraph four.
Question, I'm just ignorant.
Oh, okay.
The part that is in blue, actually.
Yes, okay.
I don't know where that is.
Special permit shall be issued in accordance with the requirements.
Well, it's section eight, C4 of this bylaw.
That's the general protective zoning bylaw of Chatham.
Okay, but I took this bylaw as meaning this bylaw.
Okay. Do you have a suggestion how to change it, Gloria?
I would just say of this bylaw, of protective bylaw.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I would just add, rather than saying of this bylaw, of the zoning bylaw or protective bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good catch. Any other questions on page three? So then we'll move to page four. There's quite a bit in red on page four. So just ask if there are any questions or comments for Katie or Gloria or Attorney Costello. Yes, Frank?
The question has to do with the definition of qualified household.
The question has to do with the definition of qualified household. How, what was the thought process behind it? How did we come up with that definition?
So this was a definition that the Cape Cod Commission came up with as a way of kind of addressing both the affordability as well as the year-round restriction components of this. So I suppose that it's not, it's not like something standard that you see in multiple communities across the Commonwealth. So I think that there's a little bit of flexibility in this. I mean, the idea was that if you do these year-round occupancy restrictions, we should have some parameters by which to define it. And, let me think. I think that we talked a little bit about the possibility of just having it be like a primary residence, but you know to be a primary residence, you just have to live there for like six months plus a day. And I don't think that, thought that that really got to the whole idea of building a year-round community. And I know that State Senator Julian Seer, in his special legislation to create year-round restrictions, actually put an 11-month residency requirement, which I think is a little bit, a little bit difficult. I mean, I was thinking about my year in 2023, and I wasn't, I wasn't on the Cape for 11 months out of the year. So I think that we kind of negotiated it down to 10 months. Did we talk nine months at all, or was it just? I think we might have, or I'm trying, maybe I had that conversation with someone else. But we thought, we thought the 11 months was a little bit restrictive and I think probably wouldn't meet the needs of the public. And we landed on 10 months, but that's, of course, up for debate.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. So just a comment, drafting comment. It starts out by saying an individual family or set of unrelated individuals. Basically, that's saying a person or persons, basically, who jointly rent. So the concept there is that all the individuals have to be on the lease?
That's my reading of it. So I think that, I think that "who jointly rent" probably modifies "unrelated individuals", right? Because an individual or a family, or "set of unrelated individuals who jointly rent a year-round rental unit."
Okay, so you might want to clarify that, maybe.
I mean, I think, to me, it's self-explanatory because a family isn't going to jointly rent. Like, you're not going to put your kids' names on the deed. But we can, I mean, maybe Pat has a way of clarifying that. But the idea is that if you have a group of unrelated individuals, you want to make sure that they are all, you know, covered by the requirement to live there, you know, year-round.
Okay, all right, very good.
But I don't know, does Pat want to weigh in?
Well, they're not, though. Only one of them has to live there right now.
Yeah.
Oh, for at least.
Attorney Costello, do you want to comment on this question?
It's fine with me, just one of them has to live there all year round, except.
Well, 10 months.
10 months, yes.
Yes, yeah.
But that person.
Sure, Madam Chair, good evening. I read the language the same way that Gloria does. I do think that the jointly rent section of that sentence relates to the unrelated individuals. I think, again, I didn't draft it initially, but that's the clear, the clear meaning or construction I would give to that particular phrase.
Yeah, I guess the problem, and maybe you can see whether this is, you have one group of people who live there, and most of them go away, but one of them stays for 10 months. That's one. Or you have one person who lives there, and every week, three other people live there. And that's still, the only, I mean, that's, isn't that also okay? Under the, couldn't somebody who did that get away with the way the wording is here?
It's almost like a sublet while they're still there, is what you're saying.
I'm saying, I'm saying it's, it's a group of unrelated people who live in the house, only one of whom has to live there 10 months of the year. To me, I think we could probably make it a little clearer. Maybe everybody does have to sign that lease. And some of them don't have to live there all year round, but they have to be on the lease. That's what we would, that's what we're assuming is the, is the pattern of habitation there, not that every, every month, there's another, a new person in there.
I mean, that's, that's my read of it, that they're all on the lease, and at least one has to be there a minimum of 10 months.
Okay, well, then, then let's be a little more clear on that. And Gloria, on the same point, I was.
I think it says, I'm not 100% sure how it could be.
That's how I read it.
Rather than say, than it actually says, unrelated individuals who jointly rent a year-round rental, and then going down another sentence, at least one household member must occupy the household for at least 10 months annually to be a qualified household. I read it clearly.
Was there any discussion with Cape Cod Commission about subletting being inappropriate? Or would you have one of the people who's initially on the lease, and everybody else isn't there, but they all jointly sublet the thing to whomever for whatever period?
I, jointly rent, I think is the key word.
Could we just say a person or persons who jointly rent?
That's what it says.
They can jointly sublet.
It says an individual family or set of unrelated individuals, and that's leading to confusion.
Well, do we have a definition of family somewhere else in the zoning bylaw that we have to parse at this?
I think we do.
So that's probably why we have it, have it this way, so that it's consistent with the rest of the zoning bylaw, but also allows for that, you know, because who wants to define what a family is? And this sort of does by saying, you know, an unrelated group of individuals that are on the same, you know, lease.
But just as I read it, they could sublet it to a corporation, all of the people on the lease could sublet it.
I know there's.
One of the people on the lease has to live there, but the, you know, the rest of the time, it could be sublet to whomever.
Maybe it just needs.
Right back into the short-term rental issue. That's a question, not a statement, really.
Let me, let me look into this and see if it's mentioned. I know that it does restrict short-term rentals, but I don't.
Later on, under year-round owner units and year-round rental, it speaks directly to short-term rental.
Right. So, which says you can't short.
Right.
So, I mean, typically landlords have a clause in their leases that don't allow for sublets. I suppose it's, if it's that important, we could probably put something like that, that into here, but at minimum, they couldn't sublet for anything less than, say, 32 days so that they don't run afoul of the restriction against short-term rentals?
I don't know if it's important or not, I'm just asking if it's important, that's all.
Attorney Costello, do you have any comments? See you.
I do think that the sublet issue is, is an open question to some degree. However, I think the definition of qualified household, I mean, I would construct it as unrelated individuals who jointly rent a year-round rental unit on a lease of at least 12 months. Is that, when you read that entire clause together, it indicates to me that those unrelated individuals do have to jointly be parties to the lease of at least 12 months. But, again, that being said, could those unrelated individuals jointly sublease the property to someone else? I think, I do think that's an open question under the language. We could expressly put a bar on subletting in there.
Yeah.
That's the most simple way to address it.
But does it, I mean, I guess it's a slippery slope if someone's subletting it for like a month or two, but is it a bad thing if someone has to, I don't know, go somewhere for their job and they put another year-round person in there through a sub, a sublet? I don't know. I mean, what are, what are we trying to protect against?
We're trying to protect against rolling these up such that they're owned by a provision that rents them out.
You're.
And rents them out by the day, week, month, to maximize the revenue potential?
So they can't rent them out by the day, week, or month, unless it's like a month plus a couple of days? Because that's prohibited, short-term rental is. So it could be rented longer, it could be rented, I guess, seasonally, subletted? I don't, I don't know.
Gloria, I think I would say it the other way around, as stated upfront, is what the objective of this is. It's trying to promote year-round residence. And therefore, anything that allows that to be avoided is not inconsistent with the intent of the board.
I mean, but then again, we're saying that only one person in the household has to hit that 10-month annual threshold, so, yeah.
It could happen with the family. I mean, the same thing could potentially happen with the family, that, you know, mom takes the kids to Europe for, and dad stays and lets out all the sublets. It potentially could, it's not as likely, you would think.
Let us take this under advisement, and we'll look into whether the open question of subletting kind of erodes the purpose of the year-round restriction.
Yeah.
And of course, it also relates to owning as well, which is.
And maybe we need to just.
I don't think we're trying to prohibit someone owning something and just not living in it. Well, I think we are. Somebody just buys it and goes two weeks in the summer, why is that, that doesn't solve our housing issue? That has, somebody has to occupy it 10 months, that's critical. Well, that's what it says. Yeah, yeah, no. But you're. I'm in favor of that. I just never sensed that the board was overwhelmingly. Oh, no. On board with me. No, that's critical.
Yes, Frank?
Let me interrupt.
Okay.
Doesn't that tie to the density bonus, though? Not by right?
That's exactly what Katie was just saying, yes, it does.
Exactly. Because we have to face the fact that there will be units potentially built, and we are allowing for this, the bylaw allows for units to be built that are market rate and where people can do what they want. They don't have to live there year-round. Yes. So that is part of this bylaw. We need to accept that fact. And it's part of what we need to include in the bylaw to allow for economically feasible development to take place.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I was going to say. So it's very important that there is a certain percentage of market rate units, because those are the units that actually subsidize the cost of the affordable and year-round units, even though year-rounds are probably, you know, more expensive than the affordables. There's still a limiting factor on them, so the, you know, cost per square foot is going to be lower, the ultimate sale price is lower. And you need to make sure that this is economically feasible, otherwise you will never get people taking advantage of the density bonus and doing, you know, small developments where they have the smallest payment in lieu.
Frank?
Yeah, I mean, principal residence, I take it we're defining that as being a case where at least one household member is there for 10 months?
There are state laws that define the principal residence, and that's what we would be relying on this.
So you're referring to the tax laws, that if you're there for more than half a year, you're a resident?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is basically saying if you're here for six months, you're good, right?
Well, no, because at least one member has to occupy the household for 10 months.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's possible we'd have a situation here where, for example, nobody is a citizen of Chatham, being able to vote, right? I'm, I'm just trying, let me say it differently. We're focusing on six months, I guess. Why wouldn't we say eight months or nine months?
We're focusing on 10 months.
You could say 10 months.
That's only one, one household member, right? So.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I suppose, I suppose it could be stricter. I mean, so for an individual, that individual has to be there for the 10 months.
Well, as I understand.
For a family, I'm going to assume that the majority of the family is going to be there for 10 months, especially if it's a family with kids in the schools. I think that this is probably written in a way that addresses that whole group of unrelated individuals who come together and lease a place for a year. I think that it makes sense to make sure that it's not, you know, a group of, you know, unrelated individuals from New York who, you know, can afford to.
Sure.
Do a year's lease, and each of them can, you know, come up for a month at a time.
But just to go back to the point, by using the word principal residence, we're using six months as the guide. And there's no particular reason why we couldn't use seven months or eight months.
Let me see it.
Is that right? I'm just wondering why we used six months, except for the fact it's a convenient reference to the tax law. What we really want is to have people living here year-round, or more or less year-round. So why use six months? Why not use seven months or eight months? Just a question.
I mean, I think we're using 10 months.
For one person, at least one.
Aren't we using 10 months, as drafted?
Yeah. But for the, for the group.
You wouldn't need that 10-month at all if you changed the six months to, let's say, eight months or nine months. But I won't go any further with it, I'm just throwing that out as a possibility. Let me make a minor drafting suggestion in the last sentence, where it says, at least one household member must occupy the household, I think it should say, occupy such leased or owned unit. And then for at least 10 months annually, it might say for at least 10 months in any calendar, in each calendar year, just to be clear.
So noted, thank you.
Okay. And if I could just comment, the way I'm, to comment on Frank's comment, the way I'm reading it is that, say you had a family or unrelated individuals, the whole, everyone in that group has to occupy the unit for at least six months and a day, the way it's worded now, and at least one person of that group must occupy it for at least 10 months in a calendar year. That's the way it's worded currently, because that's how principal residence is defined. So does the, would the board like to change that so that all members need to do the 10 months? Or are we happy with the most, that the, most of the members have to do it for six months and a day, and at least one has to be there for 10 months? I'm, my sense of the board is that the board is fine with that. Okay. And can I just ask, and then we do want to add some language about barring subletting. I think Attorney Costello suggested that, and I, my sense of the board is the board would like to add language in that regard. We can adopt Frank's, my sense of the board is that we're fine with adopting Frank's rewording instead of household, saying leased or owned unit?
Such leased or owned unit for at least 10 months annually in each calendar year.
Okay, yeah, that's good. And then I just want to ask the question, again, in response to something Frank brought up, is it a grammatical confusion because we say individual family or set of unrelated individuals who jointly rent? And the phrase "who jointly rent a year-round rental unit" actually applies to all of those.
That was my reading.
Yeah. Three types of people, an individual, a family, or set of unrelated individuals. So that's correct. I mean, I think that's a correct understanding. Okay, great.
Madam Chair, I.
Can we move that so it's less?
Less what?
Individuals who occupy that.
It's correctly, I think it's correctly worded.
The suggested revision to make it in each calendar year, I think, would create an issue because. an issue, because many leases don't start on January 1st. So, if you have a one-year lease that starts in February...
Excellent point.
Then you would have an issue with... You can't stay in a place for 10 months of the year if there's only nine months in the year left, so...
Okay, yes. Or your lease might start in November 1st.
Not sure how you do it. I was okay with it as drafted, but I recognize...
Maybe at least 10 months of the 12-month lease term.
Yes, that would be... That would be better.
10 months.
Yes, that would be better. Okay, great. Okay, so are we satisfied with vetting this particular paragraph? Any other comments on the next two paragraphs, still on page four, about year-round ownership units and year-round rental units?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with what it says substantively. I was just wondering why we have a different definition of short-term rental than, for example, we have in the health regulations that were just adopted for registration of short-term rentals.
After rental unit.
Why wouldn't we have a parallel definition, just so people don't get confused?
I'm not... I'm not clear on what the difference is. I mean, we... I think we reference...
Short-term rental in the health regulations says, "A residential dwelling or any bedroom within a dwelling rented out using advanced reservations for a fee for a period of not more than 31 consecutive calendar days excluding certain things like..." And here we have a different definition.
But ours references the CMR that the Board of Health definition was taken from.
I went to the CMR and read it, and it doesn't seem to parallel the definition that we have in the... So, you just might want to look at that, because I think, just for the sake of transparency and understanding by the citizens of Chatham, I think it's important to have consistency in our definition of short-term rentals. And if it is consistent, I stand corrected.
Okay.
And I hate to do it, but can we go back to qualified household and then put in a semicolon?
A semicolon?
And I...
Where do you want a semicolon?
After the "year-round rental unit..."
On a lease.
...semicolon, "on a lease of at least 12 months."
Wait, where is that?
An individual family or set of unrelated individuals who jointly rent a year-round rental unit, semicolon, "on a lease of at least 12 months."
That's questionable grammatically.
Yeah.
I think it's... I think that's Oxford.
Well, so as... So, I have a...
The problem is, you don't know where the "on the lease at least 12 months," whether it applies to the whole series, or it only applies to the last one. That's the problem.
It applies to the whole series.
We're going to... We'll wordsmith, and we'll send this to Pat to make sure that it's...
Because I have a best friend from high school who made $10 million on an Oxford comma, and it's virtually the same issue.
But this is an Oxford semicolon.
Yes. It's just the problem is, I'm going to interpret it... The third... That qualification is... It's ambiguous. It doesn't... You don't know whether who jointly rent a year-round rental unit on a lease of at least 12 months is the only one that it applies to, or whether "on a 12 months" applies to individual or a family or...
It applies to...
Figure out a better way to do it, but right now, it's ambiguous.
We'll definitely wordsmith it and send it to Pat to look at.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So, any other comments on the last two paragraphs? And Attorney Costello, I just wanted to ask you, any comments on the question of consistency with the Board of Health definition of short-term rental?
I just reviewed, Madam Chair, the definition of short-term rental in Section 6411. I don't have the Board of Health regulation before me, but this is a statewide regulation. It's premised on the provisions of general law. I assume that the reason the Commission chose that analogy was because of the broader application of the regulation, whereas individual towns might have different local Board of Health regulations. But I... The definition I see in the 830 CMR 64G is the standard definition for short-term rentals in multiple contexts, so...
With the exemption for two weeks, so anyone can rent their place short-term for two weeks and not have to pay taxes on it and not have to register it.
Right, right. Now, so I understand the point about the consistency between Chatham's Board of Health and zoning by law regulations, but I assume that's the reason why the Commission chose this particular definition, as we've modified it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay, next page is page six. So, let's go through the... Any... Let's go... Start at the top, but any questions or revisions or comments on any of this language in red?
I'm going to go back to something we talked before about...
Before. So, we're on a previous page?
Yes.
Okay.
The words rounded up or down?
So, which page are you on?
I think we're on the section about density.
Okay, so you're on page six.
Okay, my pages are now numbered. I see that. Okay, right in the middle.
Yes.
Says, "Number shall be rounded up or down." I think we should simply say, "rounded up." Routed up, or rounded down, or something.
Yeah.
I actually... We had a version that just had up.
Yeah.
That was my recollection.
I thought we had too. So, can we strike or down? Or Katie, did you have a comment about... Oh, yes, I remember.
So, I did look at the parking regulations. We always round up for parking regulations, because we never want to be short. The only other place in our bylaw that we reference is under the mandatory units in the affordable section. And what we say is that, you know, I think it's 1.5... Actually, let me... Just give me a moment. I can pull it up. But it basically says 1.5, we round down, or above 1.5, we go up. So, it's... If we wanted to do that, I think it's better to just go round up.
I agree.
Sorry.
Yeah, we should just round up, because then, if you round down, you're not hitting the percentage required.
Yeah, I agree too. Any objection from the Board to strike or down? Okay, great. I have another... I have a comment on this section. In the next paragraph, "Required year-round ownership or year-round rental units shall be included on the site of the project, shall be integrated with the rest of the development, shall be comparable in quality, access to, and use of amenities and location within the development, and shall be constructed at the same rate and timeframe as unrestricted units in the project." The word "comparable," I'm just wondering if it could be a little stronger, such as "equal to," something like that. Katie, did you have a comment?
Yes, we had talked at the last meeting about looking in to see if there was a definition through the Executive Office of Housing in livable communities. I've looked. I haven't found it yet, but I'm sure that there is, and we'll... I've got that highlighted in our working version. So, and again, just going back to, you know, we've... I've got a working version where we capitalized Planning Board and, you know, others, but I wanted to make sure that the Board had the version that was looked at at the last meeting.
Okay.
So, we do have that highlighted for review as well.
Okay, great, great.
Can I make a suggestion in that first paragraph that's right at the top, where it's...
Yes.
That are not... That are not income-restricted, but are year-round restricted? Or something like that? Are not income-restricted, but are...
Resident makes...
Year-round restricted.
An additional... That are not...
Yeah, I would word this differently. That are restricted for year-round occupancy, but...
Restricted for year-round occupancy, but not restricted for income.
Yes, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments on any of the red highlighted?
To make it even clearer, 50% of... Or 25%... All units are restricted for year-round occupancy.
No.
About 25%?
They are not. No, 50%.
No, the 25% of new dwelling units as attainable are also restricted to year-round occupancy.
That is true. I feel like that must be somewhere...
So, why don't we just leave it the way it is and say, end it at "income-restricted"? Both... All of these units are also restricted for year-round occupancy. All of these, up to 50%. Yeah, all such units or some... Make it two sentences, but... But our definition for the rental units that are year-round occupancy is 10 months, right? Right. Whereas, the affordable housing unit regulations may be different. I'm not sure we want to go change what rules apply to affordable housing.
All right, anyway.
This is attainable.
It's attainable. I understand what Bob is saying. So, we'll, like the last thing, we'll wordsmith a little bit and run it by Pat, because, right, so you have year-round and income-restricted, year-round and not income-restricted, each at 25%.
Right.
We'll make that clear.
Okay, great.
Laurie, I just, for clarification, would ask, you know, if a developer has a one-acre lot and has no interest in pursuing the density bonus, how many units can be put there without any restriction on attainable housing or on year-round occupancy?
So, without going for a density bonus, there's no requirement to do a year-round restriction, and in fact, it would be illegal to do so, because they're allowed to have five dwelling units per acre. So, without pursuing the density bonus, they can do five units on a one-acre parcel, of which 20% need to be affordable, or one. Or they can choose to do fewer units and have a payment in lieu for a fractional unit.
Right.
Five? I thought it was four.
We have base residential density. She'll be a maximum of five dwelling units per acre. We... We're not revisiting that. We... We're not. So, we've talked about that. We hashed it out. I have my old scratch notes when we were talking about that, where you guys didn't want to go over four. And I said, "Hey, I have an idea. Why don't we do five? Because if you do 2.4 times five, you come up with an even 12." So, all of our numbers work out right now. You know, we can justify five units per acre based on the pre-existing build-out analysis and Dr. Bob's work with sewer and septic and everything, so...
And aren't we talking a zoning acre, not a true acre, and that's why it worked out better at 40,000 square feet with five units or something like that?
So, I actually remember talking about that zoning acre versus this, but right now, this says an acre. It doesn't say 40,000 square feet. So, if you want to do it, five dwelling units per 40,000 square feet, which does make sense from a square-footage perspective. But that doesn't really matter, because in the real world, we don't have, like, exactly 40,000 square-foot lots. We have 40,000 and 67 feet, or 40,000 and 200 feet. So... But if you want to do 40,000 as opposed to an acre, I don't know when that changed back. I know we did have a 40,000 discussion.
We did have a discussion. I just think we never agreed to change it, and we thought saying an acre was fine. Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Teams is frozen.
Okay.
We'll need to take a break to reboot, so that a lot of participants can...
All right, great.
Chat's frozen.
All right.
How convenient is that?
So, we'll take a break.
And I hope it froze before. I was like, "We're not redoing this. You guys are done. Sit down."
Let's say it'll be 10... Let's allow 10 minutes. Might not be that long, but let's turn our microphones off, and we'll be offline. But let's turn our microphones off and we'll be offline.
Sure, thanks, Madam Chair. So at the last meeting, some board members expressed questions regarding the special condition and what those conditions are. So we actually have that spelled out already in our zoning bylaw. Actually, if you give me just a moment. So for example, let's see. You can see here, a conversion of an existing dwelling to a multifamily dwelling is currently a special condition under the current bylaw. And so if you see here, the convert... For that to happen by special condition, it needs to meet these criteria already laid out. So it's already there, but there was a question at the last meeting about how do we know what those special conditions are? And I just wanted to bring the board's attention to that part of our bylaw.
Great. I have a question. Are the special conditions particular to six, conversion of existing dwellings? Or is there like, you know how you have a special permit section which lists all the criteria? Is there a special condition section that lists all the criteria?
Yes, the special conditions for each category are laid out. The conditions are laid out for each of them.
So this is just an example?
This is just an example, right.
So would we have to have... Would we have to have special condition criteria specifically for this?
Yes. So I think that when we brought this back, we actually added, changed from, I think, by right to by special condition for multifamily with five or more. So we may just want to revisit that to see if we need to add specific special condition criteria. But everything else, if you look under the last section, Section 18, under special use regulations, all of these other uses that have a special condition are already referenced in the current bylaw, and those special conditions would remain.
Okay. And the special permit granting criteria are also defined in the bylaw. Yeah. And just to review, I'm just going to read to you. So even outside of the red, in this case, I'm going to refer to the uses even outside of the red. For special permit, we have formula business establishment, we have motel, hotel, and inn, we have mixed-use development utilizing the density bonus, we have affordable apartment incidental to a single-family dwelling for pre-existing single-family dwellings, and we have multifamily dwelling utilizing the density bonus, including townhouses, duplexes, et cetera. So at least in one, in some zones, those are allowed by special permit. And by special condition in our use table, we have lunchroom, we have restaurant, we have tourist home, we have mixed-use development with five or more residential units not using... Not utilizing the density bonus. I'm sorry, that was special condition. My mistake. Mixed-use development utilizing the density bonus, we have a special permit. And then we have affordable apartment, I'm sorry, incidental to single-family dwelling. Sorry, I've been misreading some of these. Did I? And then we have multifamily dwelling utilizing the density bonus allowed in Zone A2 and Zone B by special permit. So I just, in reviewing those, I just want to make sure the board is, that we're all on deck with what is special condition and what is special permit. And my apologies if I might have read one or two of those incorrectly. Art, did you have a question on any of them?
Yes. Gloria, maybe you can help me understand this. There's residential components underneath mixed use, and then there's residential components in the last page, on Page 16, that's titled residential only. I'm not quite sure, is that where parcels are not, do not have frontage on Route 28 and say secondary roads? Where we call for a commercial use in that frontage there and that. But there are some lots that are at the rear that could be just residential. Is that the intent here for it to cover this?
Yes.
So that is exactly the intent. So, and I actually, so I'm still, I'm still a little bit up in the air about multifamily dwelling with one to four residential units not utilizing density bonus, multifamily dwelling with five or more units not utilizing the density bonus, and the other one that says it's utilizing the density bonus not being allowed at all in A1. So A1 is 100 feet from the edge of the road right of way. So 100 feet is a long way to only allow mixed use. And I can think of a couple examples on the ground, because I actually drove around and looked, where I could see potentially the frontage building, which is key, that has residential, so that your pedestrian experience...
Has commercial, I mean.
Yeah, has commercial, sorry. So that your pedestrian experience is of that kind of commercial village, you know, feel. But that potentially, depending on the scale of that building, there may be room behind it, but still within that 100 feet, where it might be appropriate to put residential only. And the other place where I think it's, and that's really just a judgment call, I mean, maybe you don't want that. But the place where I think that it could potentially be an issue is, not that I'm going to bring up a sore point, but for those split lots with the RPZ. Like if you guys remember what we talked about with the RPZ footnote, where we allow the redevelopment with the same density that's already there, however, if you're taking buildings down, you can't put them within the RPZ, but you have that density that you can then pull out to not the RPZ. And if that area happens to be part of that 100-foot where you're restricted to only commercial, then that would severely limit your ability to redevelop that lot with commercial and residential.
I, when I did my look on this, I came up with that same assessment there. I guess if there was a one-off like that, what would be the applicant's remedy if they wanted to seek some relief on that? Could they do that and apply for it?
So we don't...
In some way, whether it's by our board or ZBA?
I think it would end up being a variance because we don't give the option for a special permit for this.
Right.
But I think, I guess my point in saying all this is, you know, we're not under time pressure. We're not, we don't have to get this out before town meeting in two weeks.
Right.
So let's think about this. Let's do a couple little sketch plans. Let's see where problem lots might be. And let's think about maybe parsing this a little differently. And I think that it might be easy enough to do because we redefined that, you know, the frontage building to frontage. And that actually was one of my other comments, which is like, well, you know, it's really different. It doesn't have to be the primary building, but the key is what's happening along the street scape. So maybe if we can look into those and come in with like a little bit more of a nuanced approach that wouldn't... And I'm trying to think of the, I'm trying to think of also the alternative. So if we do something like that where it's just like, well, your frontage building has to do this, would that cause like a developer to like minimize that frontage building and the commercial component in order to maximize housing at the expense of the street scape? All I'm saying is, I have a lot of things swimming around in my mind to get this particular part just right. So I think that it's worth looking at, unless you guys are happy with the way it is.
I think, I think the build-out analysis and the visual images of it is going to clarify the picture because it helped me. I did my own associated with this, and then it helped me understand a lot more. So once we get that, I think we could delve back into this, and that's a good question to ask. Is that 100-foot the right number for this?
Well, the 100-foot is the, oh, you mean so for actually changing that A1's...
Well, I'm not necessarily, I mean, I'm interested in a good mix between commercial and residential. And there will be plenty of opportunity for residential, I think. So I'm not afraid of the 100 feet. But I think when you see graphically some of the examples with the build-out, it's, I think it's going to help all of us on the board to understand, you know, is there any refinement that we need to do on some of these numbers?
So you're suggesting that maybe we take a second look at it in the context of the build-out analysis that Cape Cod Commission is working on?
I think it would help with that.
Whereas I think that might be a good approach. I think one reason we kept the Zone A1 at the 100 feet is we want to have enough commercial activity in the area as a whole. And also, we want to look again, as we did before, Gloria, at the exact location of the RPZ and exactly which lots are affected and see, because it's going to go lot by lot for that.
Just to clarify, I don't have a problem with the 100 feet. I think that that's a very reasonable depth. But what happens within that 100 feet, I think we should be able to control a little bit more than just not allowing that. I mean, maybe it's so much as, you know, the frontage building has to be a mix, and it has to be at least 50% of the gross floor area of all the uses within that 100 feet. Like there are so many different ways to do this.
Well, if you take a look at the commercial area, the commercial area can go in Zones A2 and B also. So it doesn't have to be residential at all.
Yeah.
If, the way I read this is, am I right?
You are reading it correctly. So there's going to be pressure to do residential because it's more profitable?
I understand that residential is going to be a driver on this, and from my experience, that is an important component. And it would surprise me if the residential doesn't happen first on this. And that's going to help the overall development in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center once it gets approved.
Yeah, and I think what your last comment, Gloria, that the residential is more profitable, I think again, we wanted to be sure that there was incentive or requirements for enough commercial development to make it what it should be, which is a neighborhood center that has both commercial and residential. And also, given the fact that some of the commercial will be providing a means of income, I mean ideally for some of the residents, hoping that we can reestablish the traditional pattern of commercial below, living above, and commercial that's actually providing It's, but we do have to be realistic. I think, you know, that the residential is probably the most profitable. And the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw as it stands now does allow for market-rate units. And we're going to see, when it gets redeveloped, we probably will see a lot of those.
And the residential drives the economic development, right? You need a critical mass of people living in a village to make businesses economically viable.
So at this point, I'm sensing the board that, and Gloria and Katie and Attorney Costello, that we're not going to make any changes or reconsiderations, but we will take a look at this in the context of the build-out analysis. Is that, we'll take a look at special conditions, special permit, what we allow everywhere, and just make sure that it's working, given the actual lots. Is that all right? Does everyone agree to that? So we're looking at a few areas that are, we're going to reword from tonight's consideration, correct? I think we've made notes of those. And our next meeting is May 20.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry to do this, but we went flying past the density section before I had a chance to...
The density section.
Make some comments.
Okay.
Page six.
Okay. I did ask several times if there were any more comments, but sorry if we missed you.
Recognized by the chair.
Okay. All right, Warren, go ahead.
Our objective here is to try and promote year-round residency as well as attainable housing. But as I just work through the wording here and say, am I incentivized as a developer to seek the density bonus? It's not clear to me. It's not clear to me that I am. If you only build four units, everything can be market rate and no, no restrictions at all.
So that's true, except you'd have to pay a payment in lieu?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's true.
If you.
Five units, right?
As soon as you go after the density bonus, the arithmetic is that you essentially have fewer totally market rate units until you get up to a density of, of seven per acre. And you never get more than six market rate units if you go all the way to the max of 12 units per acre. In other words, it just seems that there's a disincentive to going after the density bonus, which seems to be the opposite of what I thought we were trying to do, which was to provide incentives, in other words, get more market rate units if you went into the density bonus, although be it, you would also have attainable and rental restricted units. So my question is, are we creating a situation where nobody is ever going to build more than four units per acre? In which case, then we have no constr, no restraints at all on short-term rentals or, and we're not creating any affordable housing or attainable housing. I, it, in just working over numbers myself, I wanted to ask whether it would be appropriate for the board to consider that the first four units would have to be restricted in terms of rental. And that you would then, if you get into the density bonus, you would be able to increase the number of totally unrestricted units, as well as create attainable. And everything that's here would apply. And the simplest thing that I could do that seemed to be consistent with what our objective was, was to make right from day one, the first four units have got to be rental restricted.
So that, so that's not legal? I mean, it has to be part of a special permit process to be able to do that, that type of restriction? We don't have a mechanism in state law that allows us to do these year-round restrictions. So, so you're allowed to build those one to four units by right, essentially, except that we have that overlying affordability requirement, which is going to manifest in a payment in lieu, because it's below the 20%, right? So once you hit five, then one of those units is 20%. But below that, it's a payment in lieu. But you can't, you can't just require deed restricted, deed restrictions for year-round occupancy on, you know, construction that's allowed by right in the zoning district.
What if it was just affordable? Put aside the year-round part. Could we require, let's say, two of the four to be affordable?
So, I mean, you could, but that would incentivize a developer to use 40B, where only 25% are required to be affordable. So we're, I was talking to Mike earlier today. So we're working, we're working with like our base requirements for zoning here, 40B up here, and this is our, this is our territory, where we're trying to get something out of developers without pushing them towards using 40B. So we can, that's why, that's why we feel relatively comfortable going up to the 25% affordability requirement, because it's not more than 40B. And it's a little bit more, it's a little bit easier to get a special permit as opposed to comp, permit. It's restricted primarily to attainable housing, right? So it's, it's, the income gap is, is less to close. So the way it's structured now makes this a reasonable alternative to 40B. If you put out a bylaw that said 50% of everything has to be affordable, nobody would use it. Everyone would go to 40B. Or they'd build like a, you know, two single-family homes or something like that.
And is the answer the same if it was 25%?
So we, we do have that. We have a base requirement of 20%. And then to get to that 25%, that's when we allow the density bonus.
But, but you can buy out of that, right? Payment in lieu?
For the partial units. But once you're using a density bonus, you have to construct affordable units.
But put aside, I'm sorry, put aside the density bonus for a minute. Could we simply require the 25% of the units be affordable?
I, yeah, I suppose you could.
Okay.
As opposed to the 20% baseline. But then what do you get for, what would you require for a density bonus? Or are you just trying to take density bonuses off the table?
Not at all. I was following up Warren's point of trying to give an incentive to get people into the density bonus, where we have these other objectives that will be met, so.
I think the issue might be that if they don't take advantage of the density bonus, and we set it at 25%, it is essentially a 40B. They, correct? And they could use 40B, and the thing about.
To get density.
Yeah, and the thing about using the 40B is then they don't need to pay attention to any of the other zoning, and we actually want them to pay attention to it here.
Frank, I think we would lose out tremendously if we push that level.
Oh, we would.
As soon as somebody sees an opportunity to circumvent a lot of the other things that we're incorporating in here.
We want them to do these things.
They'll do that, and they'll get what they want, and we'll get nothing. And so I, I think that's the reason why we structured it at 20% for that first level. And it makes sense that if you want to go up levels, we can ratchet that a little bit, which is what we did. It still gives them incentive to go ahead and use the bylaw as is proposed versus going a 40B route.
And 20% is pretty progressive. So we will be the third community in the Commonwealth, Cambridge first, then Provincetown, then Chatham, to have 20% as their baseline affordability requirement.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was the thing. We didn't want them to go to a 40B, where they don't need to pay attention to the rest of the bylaw, basically.
So, so I, I, I'm going to go back to my four. You could build four units. When you build the fifth unit, it's, it's no longer, you can't build five units that are not, that are all market rate.
No, correct. Once you hit five, one of them has to be affordable.
Right, so that's where my four came from.
But when you build four, you have to pay like 80% of the cost of a unit. When you build three, you have to build, you have to pay 60% of the cost. So it's not, I mean, it's just, it's just a different way of addressing our housing needs. Like sometimes they're going to get things constructed, and sometimes we're going to get a payment in lieu. Sometimes we might get a little bit of both, a payment constructed, and then because of the numbers, you know, we get, you know, 30% or something of the, the cost of that affordability gap. There's nothing wrong with having a funding stream through a payment in lieu. Because the funding stream would go for affordable housing.
Yeah, I'm just going back to where my one, one in four came, four density came from.
Does the funding stream go into the trust?
How did, I can't remember how.
I think we need to turn microphones on. Frank, maybe.
Does the funding stream go into the trust?
I, my under, so originally when this was conceived, and I don't, I don't know where we landed with the language, but the idea was that because this is focused on attainable, then yes, it would be able to go into the Affordable Housing Trust to be used for attainable housing. But technically, there's special legislation that's still pending that allows the Affordable Housing Trust to work up to 200% AMI, but yes.
All right. So that's where it would go? It would go into the trust?
Yeah, it's not going to the general fund.
Okay, good. Are there any other questions?
Well, just to clarify.
Or comments?
Gloria, I, I think I heard you say that it, you know, by law, we could not require that the zoning in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center require that there be rental restrictions on lots.
You mean year-round restrictions?
Yes.
So not unless it's through a special permit process? And that was, that was a decision from town council about that? That we would be able to pursue year-round restrictions through the special permit process? But we cannot do that without a special permit process.
Okay, well then, I would, is it therefore possible to consider, and given the objective, which is not to promote market rate units, to have a special permit for units one through four, which we would then put in there, the year-round rental restrictions?
I, I don't think we were wanting to restrict market rate units. That was not the objective. That, that is a component of what is going, the market is going to want to drive anyway. So if you restrict market rate units, you may not get anything at all. So we're trying to be realistic with, with the economy, with.
Arts, arts right, that the market rate units, just, so what we're doing is almost like a mini 40B process for the town of Chatham. And just like in 40B, it's going to depend on the developer being able to develop market rate units and having a certain profit margin, and then using some of that profit to subsidize our affordable uni, well, attainable units, and actually subsidize those year-round restricted units, because they're not going to get as much on the open market, right? So if we, and I, and I totally get the impulse to say, you know, as long as we're doing this, let's make sure that like everyone lives here, we create our community, we look at, you know, community sustainability. But it's, it's not economically viable to restrict every unit that's developed. It's just not. Like we really need that, you know, the profit margin on a market rate to be able to subsidize all of the other things that we're doing. And my guess is that, you know, every now and then you'll probably have a market rate that sells to someone who lives here year-round, but most likely it'll be, you know, a seasonal home or, or something like that, and we won't be able to restrict it.
My only real objective is, or objection is, that the density bonus seems to be perverse. As I say, you, the developer has fewer market rate units if they opt for the, for the density bonus.
But even, even if you think of simple math, so we're going to have 50% of our units restricted, right? But the density bonus is 2.4. It's more than double. So just like pure numbers. I'll look, I'll look at it a little bit closer, and I'll do like a, you know, I'll do like a little spreadsheet that says, if we create one unit, this is what happens, two units, this is what happens, three. And I'll go through and I'll make sure that it, it makes sense. But from a pure math perspective, like 2.2.4 times is greater than two times. So that covers that 50% restricted units.
And also, as I understand it, 25% are income restricted, but 25% are only restricted in terms of year-round occupancy.
Correct.
So, so presumably those can even go for a market rate, but to year-round.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, those are market rate units, they just would have, you know, perhaps a, a different market value than if they could be rented out by the day, week, or month.
That's exactly right.
Right, so.
So it's not as if they are, you know, obviously the same value as an attainable unit.
Right. So they are getting bonuses with the density bonus. They are getting incentives. Yeah.
And there'll be a learning curve on this.
Well, I, I did the same thing already. That's how I came up with this seems to be a perverse incentive. The more units you build, the fewer you end up at a market rate, the more attainable you have to do, and the more you put on a rental restriction. So as I say, hence my question, can't we get more of the rental restrictions upfront so the, the density bonus gives you really more money for the developer? That's all. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, and we can take questions and comments from the public, but first I'll ask Attorney Costello, do you have any comments on our discussion that you'd like to make? Otherwise, I'll move to the public.
I'm all set, Madam Chair. I think it's been a very, very useful and very constructive discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, just a reminder, in view of the time, if we can limit our comments to five minutes, and I do see one hand raised. Is that Elaine?
Yes, it is, Madam Chair. Thank you. Yeah, two things. First of all, I'd just like to say that I think it's critical to make sure that we don't discourage market rate apartments. I know lots of people who would not qualify, you know, at 125% AMI or less, and they need housing. And I would say that a lot of them are town employees that would not qualify. And yet, we promoted the need to provide housing for that group of people. Two things. One is on the, the five, you know, unrelated people living in a unit. I think you need two categories. One is, you know, the family unit, where you say one person, you know, the, the mother and kids go off to Disney World for, you know, the summer or whatever. And so that, somebody has to be there for 10 months. When you have five unrelated people, which you could have, because my understanding is Board of Health, a two-bedroom is two plus two plus one. So there could be five people in there. And if they're unrelated, and only one has to be there for 10 months, I see a concern where it's going to be a lot of people moving in and out, and with the potential of becoming seasonal workers. I don't know how you can enforce that. There's no enforcement ability that I see here, where, you know, someone would work for the summer, and then they leave and they send a friend up. And even though that person is on the lease, who goes away for the winter, and that new person comes in, they're not on the lease. And I don't know how you would monitor that when you've got four or five people in a unit. So I think the easier solution is to say that everybody on the lease has to be there for 10 months. Then, if there's a complaint, it's easier to enforce. If only one person is, there's no way you can keep track. I would also say that I think you're going to have a problem with that definition of having people who are unrelated, because if you're only saying two cars or one and a half cars per unit, and there are five people unrelated, there's going to be five cars, and they're going to park somewhere. They may not park near their apartment, but they're going to be taking up retail space. So I think that's something you have to consider. I don't know if by law you have to have a policy for five unrelated people, or if you can simply say, we're not even going to define family, it's just, you know, X number of people in the unit, and this is the way it's got to be. Otherwise, you should have two separate categories, and say that all five people, if they're unrelated, have to be on the lease, and they have to be there for 10 months. And I don't know, I thought that in a bylaw, there was usually an enforcement paragraph. I thought they were for ADUs. And I didn't see that here, because I guess I would wonder who would be enforcing that? That's, that's that question. And then the other one I have is related to the definition for attainable housing. It says a dwelling unit reserved in perpetuity for a household earning 80 to 125%. So I guess my question on that is why, I assume that means it's deed restricted rather than reserved, and it probably should say that it would be deed restricted. And according to MGL, in perpetuity is 90 years. And I'm wondering if you really want to say in perpetuity? You know, there are, Old Harbor Road, you know, people gifted it, they thought it was in perpetuity, and it turned out it was only 30 years. But I have a real concern with tying up properties indefinitely for 90 years. You know, we're talking, several generations are going to pass. What if in 10 years, we find out that our needs have changed? That in 10 years, all the towns are going to have affordable, everybody's going to have affordable housing, everybody's going to have them deed restricted, and we're not going to be able to fill them, but we're going to have a need for market rate? Can you undo the deed? And if so, how do you do that? With another bylaw? If we deed restrict a bunch of properties, and then find out in 10 years, we don't need that many, what do we do? Is it irreversible?
Yeah. That's the next generation.
Okay, thank you Elaine. We'll give some thought to those issues. Okay. Any other comments?
I never, I rarely get a question answered. I, town council's here, it's, it's just a general question on in perpetuity.
All right. Attorney Costello?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, happy to answer the questions.
Sure.
First of all, the enforcement aspect of, of the bylaw would be carried out by the building commissioners. This is a section of zoning bylaw and in the, the zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner has, has the right to enforce its provisions. The question is going to be, is that town officer equipped with the staff and what have you to undertake the additional measures that are going to be necessary to monitor and enforce the bylaw? But that legal authority does rest in him. And as to restrictions in perpetuity, restriction in perpetuity can be released by the party benefited by the restriction, which would be the town in this case. If the town, through town meeting action or otherwise legislation down the road, would deem it necessary or prudent to release some of these restrictions, it could do so by legislative action. So, they're not necessarily binding for generations in a situation where they become ineffective or, or non-beneficial to the public.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you so much. Any other questions from the public? I don't see any hands raised. Great. So, I think that is our final point on the agenda. We'll be looking, our next meeting is May 20, correct? And we have a few rewordings that we'll take a look at. Katie, did you want to make some comments?
That's correct. The next meeting is May 20. I think we have two or three site plan applications that we'll be looking at. We'll bring, bring back the wording, the changes, suggested edits for the board's review. I did want to mention, from the standpoint of the build-out analysis, so we had a conversation with the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay.
So, turns out, they're not actually doing it. What they've done is they've given us money towards having it done. So, we have to do an RFQ to seek a consultant, which we are in the process of. I think we should be, the RFQ should be ready to go out at the end of the week.
Great.
We'll seek a consultant to come back and then, then they'll actually do the work with us. So, I just wanted to give the board an update on the process.
Great. And we're still working with Union Studios about the visuals, which will be based on the build-out.
Those will be based on the build-out analysis, yes.
Okay. Great. So, all that's moving ahead. Great. Great. Any other comments from the board before I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Frank. So...
Arts brew. Arts brew approve. Forgot about me already.
I thought you wanted to say something else.
Arts brew approve.
Warren?
Warren Chang approve.
Bob Worchhefter.
Bob Worchhefter approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt approve.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer approves.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, Bob Dubus isn't sure yet. I'm going to need to wake up. I approve.
And this is Catherine Hopp, and I also approve that we adjourn tonight's meeting. And let's note the time as 7:00. Is that actually 7:40? And thank you, everybody, for participating and enjoy the rest of the evening.